Testing, one two three testing, testing.
Testing, one two three testing, testing.
I met with the treasurer early on when she was putting this together. And remember, this is not a new position they're asking for. They're asking for one that is thirty-five going to forty. I ask her the same question that you just asked because we're not. So there's no plan whatsoever. We're taking their word for it and we'll remember that, that they don't plan to take everyone to forty. And other than that, the rest of it just remains the same. I think it's pretty close to being perfect budget.
All right, other comments or questions for the treasurer's budget? Counselor Wilt?
Yeah. So, one thing that we've said in the, in the past is that we like to see entire departments at, you know, at all at the same hours per week. It sort of makes sense and it's nice and neat and keeps the individuals involved maybe feeling a little bit more equity amongst themselves. What? This is, so the, the switch you described an increased workload and time needed. And that's just specific to what this one person does?
Yes. We discussed it with the entire office and for the position they're in with the, everyone else in the office, they have children. They have after school stuff they don't need, they don't have room for a forty hour work week because we've got everything done now. And we talked over with her and she said that she would be more than willing to go to the forty hours. It suits her better. And at this point, we just figured it would, okay, just to have one person go to that.
Okay, so you have a need for work that's the person who said they could do it?
Yes.
Got it?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes, the only thing that I think many of us would like to know, if it's a forty hour work week, does that mean that they start at eight and they leave at five? They don't take, say, that hour for lunch counts for the forty? Because that's too much of that is going on and, and that's just not.
I can't guarantee it's going to be an eight to five position or like that. It's gonna, it's gonna mirror our office when we get busy, it'll be extra and it'll work that way. She anticipates to come in about seven forty-five and take about a thirty minute lunch and then work the rest of the day out is how we, we've tentatively set up a schedule and until we get it set firmly here, then her and I will go over and I will fix the schedule that works.
Okay, other questions? Other comments? If there are none, we will go ahead to a roll call to accept this.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much again for the public watching that was not full adoption of it, was accepting it to continue the discussion on. All right, that takes us to item six, which is the planning department. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund one thousand dash zero zero seven nine, general fund planning with a category request of personnel, eight hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred
with that for that link for easy access for all of you. So.
Thank you very much. So with that, before we proceed on to, I believe, the treasurer's office, we've got first. Before we proceed on to that, counselors have any questions about any of that so far? Let's move on to item number five, requests from the treasurer's office regarding their budget.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review Fund 1000-0003, general fund treasurer with a category request of personnel, $548,386. And the supplies category, 2,800 services, $51,650, capital zero, for a total budget of $602,836.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Welcome.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Christina Ellis, chief deputy in the treasurer's office. Hi, everybody. Just wanted to start off by saying that Kathy is homesick with COVID, so we do not want her around here. Do we?
True.
So, as you know, everyone knows what the treasurer's office does. I'm not going to bore you with those details. You don't need that. So I just wanted to start by saying, as in previous years, we have limited our expenses as much as cost expenses as much as we could. The only increase we are asking this year is for the mortgage deputy position to go from a 35-hour to a 40-hour. And the reason for that is with everything trending to a more electronic payment that we have more steps involved with our credit cards. We have to wait for the money to get into the bank. We got to verify it. We have to do the payment in the office. The extra hours will help us ensure that our timely processing of payments continues as it has been.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much for being here. Please give our best to the treasurer and we hope she feels much, much better soon. We'll jump over to questions, comments from counselors. Counselor Munson.
Ms. Ellis.
Yes.
Is the new position being requested for 40 hours the only one?
Yes.
In your office?
That is not only change. Everything else will stay at 35-hour a week.
So how many are at 35 and how many are at 40?
Well, for full time, I have four people. Three will remain at 35 and one will go to 40.
So I'm just looking at the trend for county government. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Hawke.
Right. I met with the treasurer early on when she was putting this together. And remember, this is not a new position. They're asking for, they're asking for one that is the 35 going to 40. I ask the same question that you just asked because
Yeah.
So there's no plan whatsoever. We're taking their word for it and we'll remember that, that they don't plan to take everyone to 40. And other than that, the rest of it just remains the same. I think it's a pretty close to being perfect budget.
All right. Other comments or questions for the treasurer's budget? Counselor Wilt.
So one thing that we've said in the, in the past is that we like to see entire departments at, you know, at all at the same hours per week. It sort of makes sense and it's nice and neat and keeps the individuals involved maybe feeling a little bit more equity amongst themselves. What? This is, so the switch, you described an increased workload and time needed, and that's just specific to what this one person does?
Yes. We discussed it with the entire office and for the position they're in with everyone else in the office, they have children, they have after-school stuff, they don't need, they don't have room for a 40-hour work week because we've got everything done now. And we talked over with her and she said that she would be more than willing to go to the 40 hours. It suits her better. And at this point, we just figured it would okay just to have one person go to that.
Okay. So you have a need for work. That's the person who said they could do it.
Yes.
Got it.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes. The only thing that I think many of us would like to know, if it's a 40-hour work week, does that mean that they start at eight and they leave at five? They don't take, say, that hour for lunch counts for the 40?
No.
Because that's too much of that is going on and, and that's just not.
I can't guarantee it's going to be an eight to five position or like that. It's going to, it's going to mirror our office. When we get busy, it'll be extra and it'll work that way. She anticipates to come in about 7:45 and take about a 30-minute lunch and then work the rest of the day out is how we, we've tentatively set up a schedule. And until we get it set firmly here, then her and I will go over and I will fix the schedule that works.
Other questions? Other comments? If there are none, we will go ahead to a roll call to accept this.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Wilt.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard. Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much again for the public watching. That was not full adoption of it. It was accepting it to continue the discussion on. All right. That takes us to item six, which is the planning department. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review Fund 1000-0079, general fund planning with a category request of personnel, $813,615. Supplies, $6,606. Services, $45,720, capital zero, for a total budget of $865,941.
Second.
We want to welcome our planning director here to take it away and tell us what we need to know.
Thank you. And I'm accompanied here tonight with Assistant Director Tammy Bierman. And I believe we'll have some plan commission members online. I saw at least Scott Ferris at the time of last check. I do have just a really quick presentation for you all, just to kind of update you on our office. So just as a reminder and overview for the public, we do have eight staff members in our office. We've been lucky to be fully staffed since 2022. We definitely appreciate the cost of living adjustment last year, as I do think that benefited and contributed to the retention rate. As a reminder, the planning department overview, typically the way people interact with our office is through the building permit application process. They either can do what they want and maybe they never find out that we were involved if they meet all the standards or they cannot do what they want and they follow a planning process to get there. Just in terms of our busyness in our office, I pulled a few reports just from July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024. We saw 1,340 records just within our planning processes, $85,555. And we issued 290 permits. As compared to the prior fiscal year, we saw a little bit of a decrease this past year, but not by much. It was 91,772 the prior year. And then, as I mentioned, so we deal with both planning processes or just building permits. So that's this screen as well. So we've actually seen a little bit of an uptick in the number of permits that we've issued for building permits. This year, this past year was $43,750 as compared to 42,400. So that leaves us with a total revenue the last year of $129,305.50, which is approximately 15% of our total budget that we have for you today. And then I'll just end with a few updates that we have. So we have our CDO public notice that went out. And so we have a hearing on September 24th at 5:30 here in the NatU Hill Room. For those that are unaware, the CDO is a rewrite of our zoning ordinance, our subdivision ordinance and our zoning maps. So anyone in the county jurisdiction area who wants to be involved, please come to the hearing or please feel free to give our office a phone call or an email. The best place to go is MonroeCDO.com for the latest updates. Just as a note, we are, we are going to revert back over $15,000 that you gave us for the statutory, statutorily required postcards. We were able to do that well under budget and that'll be coming back to the general fund.
Thank you.
Another general update, grading and logging permits have since been taken over by Stormwater. So that does impact our budget just a bit. But then at the same time, we've also taken over administration and monitoring of subdivision letters of credit. This is to require the implementation and completion of subdivision improvements. So we hold letters of credit that don't ever go into the general fund or budget lines in an amount of $4.2 million and we need to make sure that those stay valid and up to date. So we're, we're following up with that. And then finally, I do want to just report that we've talked with the plan commission at large and executive committee members. And we do have quite a bit of active enforcement that goes on. Our one zoning inspector shares a role doing both zoning enforcement and building permit issuances. So it's a fairly busy job when we see an uptick in building permits. So we're reviewing the need for an additional person, an additional position within office, possibly within 2025 or possibly 2026 to help with increased enforcement obligations and/or assist with those subdivision completion requirements. But we understand this would go to a future PAC meeting, so I did not include that in our budget. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's see what council questions or what questions council has. I'll start it off to help others. When we talk about enforcement, can you give examples of what that, day-to-day that means in the life of someone out there or someone concerned that enforcement's either not happening or happening, either way?
Sure. So typically, the way an enforcement case is started in our office is they can file in a complaint online by going to the county website, our OpenGov permitting software. It's fairly easy. I think just a few questions, they're able to upload any evidence that they want in order to start a complaint. Our office in particular, we typically deal with complaints regarding number of junk vehicles on a property. We also do unpermitted businesses. We'll see businesses start without any permits or approvals. We'll get involved with construction without permits at times. We are, yeah, floodplain administration, of course, if there's anything happening in the floodplain. We still, in tandem, help Stormwater with logging and grading complaints, but those are shifting responsibility over to Stormwater as well.
Counselor Iverson.
Yeah, the very last item in the threes is consultant fees and that decreased by about $13,000. What's going on there?
We've been using those fees for the CDO. So that's what's remaining.
Ending the end of the process, nearing the end of the process.
That's the remainder left in the contract.
Excellent. All right. Thank you.
I had this question put to me and I want to either get your expertise or if you need to get back to me later, if it's even something that can be answered. Someone asked a question. They said, when you go through something like the CDO, how does that affect bottom line, anything related to our budget, to our, the dollars coming in? And I, I don't even know if that is a consideration, if it would be deemed an inappropriate consideration for that process or if that factors in at all. But I do, the more I said, I thought, wow, that's not. And then I thought, we probably do need to know how that factors in specifically here in the county. We're looking at a deficit this year on request versus expenditures. And we know that folks are going to come back with things they need next year on down the road, et cetera. Any thoughts on that or would you like to get back later or whatever?
No, I think it's a valid question and I, I will probably hunt part of it, but I'll try to answer it the best I can. So some of the fees and things that we talked about today, those will be changed separately from the CDO. So a fee for a building permit or things like that coming into the general fund, that's a separate approval process. But as far as the zoning map, you know, if you have a vacant piece of land and you're zoning that for higher intensity use, such as going from agricultural to industrial. I have spoken with the assessors office and they say that it may impact a future assessment. Because a value of property, when it goes for sale, is based a lot on zoning. I think that it's fair to say it will impact future assessments and future taxes, especially if sales disclosures affect the updated zoning.
Thank you very much. I think we, on this end, probably need to figure out what that all means. Because it is, you know, I always hear people about the revenues and what do you all do with our money and all that. But those are extremely important, but I also face a lot of departments that need us to do things with those dollars to make the county run and be efficient.
I have on our MonroeCDO.com website, there's a conversion chart or an analysis from the existing zoning to the new zoning, including a column for all the vacant land that will be zoned a certain way, if that might help your question. That was in part thanks to Counselor Munson.
Thank you. Counselor McKim.
I guess I'll just follow up on this question a little bit, thinking more broadly. As I think everybody knows, we are more in this county and the operations of county government, more and more dependent on income taxes. And income taxes have to, you know, are directly dependent on people earning money who live in Monroe County. And so that means that people need to live in Monroe County and need to be able to move into Monroe County, be able to afford housing and that sort of thing. So I think there's a broader nexus between planning activities and, and the amount of money that we bring in in that everything we can do to encourage people to, to be able to actually live here and to be able to build houses, to be able to accommodate the, you know, the demand for, for houses means. And that, you know, they don't even have to be working. They don't even have to be employed here. They can be remote workers. But as long as they're able to live in Monroe County, they are bringing in money to be able to, to fund county governments. I don't know if you have any thoughts about the importance of encouraging housing and the development of, of houses and its connection with revenue.
So on that same conversion chart that I mentioned, I do encourage members of the public and council members. Of course, you all are invited to the hearing. There is information on all the residential zones. It's titled residential and it'll show the amount of acreage or percent of the area vacant. So I think it's important, you know, if the zoning is correct for what you're looking for in terms of needs of community members, then subdivisions can be done what's called by right if the zoning is proper. So it's less of a legislative decision. In other words, if it's already properly zoned to allow for subdivisions and housing to go in. I hope that answers it.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Counselor Crossley's reminded me that we're about at time on this one and I appreciate that. Counselor Hawke.
Yes. Part of what we're learning from the state and from the assessors office, because remember, she doesn't set the price on what that agricultural ground is supposed to be. That is set by others. And then she just has to put on there what, that what legislation says she has to. But that is, that has grown a huge amount, the amount that they're going to be taxed. And so people really need to understand whether or not they want to be in agriculture, what, how, you know, where they're going to be hit worse and at least understand what's happening. I'm not saying you can stop it or anybody else can stop it, but I don't want anyone to get a big shock.
All right. Counselor Iverson.
I'm going to keep this really quick. I really appreciate all the work that's going into keeping that MonroeCDO.com website up to date. The last update to the document that's going to be reviewed was last week. That's awesome. That's really great. And the other comment that I'll make, which is really briefly, is we have seen a lot of progress in terms of climate resilience in some of the departments that have come here to talk with us. And there's so much in the draft CDO that talks about climate resilience. It's really encouraging. So kudos to you and your team for really, you know, taking that on. It shows a lot of leadership. So I just wanted to publicly thank you.
Counselor Hawke.
And another real quick statement here. I received a call today from a lady who had received a card. I haven't seen what the card looks like, so I don't know how, how much explaining is on there. But she was concerned what that meant and what she was supposed to do and what, what did she, and she doesn't drive and she's even older than I am, if you can imagine. So she has concerns. And so I expect when she got that and she's concerned, others are as well because they don't know what CDO means, if that's what it says on the card. So I don't know how we get the message out. I just didn't want her to be concerned or think she had to go do something.
Sure. The postcard itself, it does contain a lot of text and it includes our phone number, our email address, our office location, hours, and then it also includes a summary of what the CDO entails.
Is that printing so small that perhaps someone can't read it?
It is on a four-by-six postcard, so it is not the largest text. We did have to fit in a lot of statutory language.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hawke. Good news, Dollar General's got these readers for $1.05. Seriously, it's a good question. It is hard to get information out to the public. I do want to thank you before we move on to do a roll call on the budget for, I'd passed on some constituent issues to your office. I just appreciate the way you all approached that, look into that to keep the county both beautiful and fitting the way that folks want out there. I think that matters. And it was a sense of professionalism that really made me proud. So anyway, small compliment for me. No other comments, questions? Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Wilt.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Item number seven is the surveyor's office.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review Fund 1000-0006, general fund surveyor with a category request of personnel, $310,229. Supplies, $550. Services, $15,001, capital zero, for a total budget of $325,780.
Second.
All right. Welcome, Mr. Surveyor.
Yes, thank you. First, I would like to thank Michelle, her staff for all the effort that they put into the budget and continuing to streamline it. Then I want to thank everyone for being here tonight, the council. Also, I'm on the plan commission and that was just a really fun budget to observe. So with that said, I'll just pivot into the county general. It's pretty much a flat budget, a flat budget with personnel. There are some adjustments with FICA and PERF, just that's what it is. So that's the increase you would see there at the bottom line. Category two, flat budget. We don't really kind of do too many expenses for our operational needs out of county general. And then in the service category, now that's where you will see a slight increase. It's a total of $5,001. I'll focus just on the 5,000 right now, where it's split between the dues and the travel and training. I want to say that the dues actually support 19-plus people across the county. So I mentioned to counsel that one of my initiatives is really focusing on educational opportunities for folks in the GIS space, but also in other spaces that can really benefit the county as a whole. That's why you see the thousand increase. We've actually had to do an in-house transfer to cover that from our traveling and from our training and travel line. You see the $4,000 increase in our travel and training. Again, that helps to support our efforts. A lot of the dollars are dedicated to conference attendance. We're talking about INASSM, AIC. Well, actually not AIC. I'm the only one from my office that attends the AIC. But it might be nice to have another person go kind of get experience with that. There's a number of different takeaways you get for attending the AIC. Also, IJIC, the Indiana Geographic Information Council, it's one of the larger nonprofit organization that is actually tied into the state constitution for GIS efforts. But the real reason I'm asking for the increase is because now that we have our GIS technician more settled and as technology continues to advance, we need to stay on top of that and some platforms are antiquated. Or, and so for a particular focus course, and I won't get into much of the minutia here, is $1,900. So I'm hoping that we can get one or two courses for a couple of folks. And again, this won't just be related to my office. This will be kind of initiative that really expands everyone that's working in that GIS space. With that, I have no other real changes on the budget. And I guess the only other thing is I don't look to spend this down if it's appropriated. If we don't spend it, as always, I'm fine with just letting that revert right back to the county general. So.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Surveyor. Let's go to questions from council. Counselor McKim.
Yeah, thank you very much. I mean, in principle, I very much support the, the training program that you're trying to encourage. I'm wondering if some of that increase or all of that increase could go in if there's a different funding source for that. a different funding source for that. I mean, could some of it, is any of that eligible for the county elected officials' training fund? Is any, could any of that go into perpetuation?
So I didn't bring a pen. I was about to make sure I made a comment about that. No, I'm fine. Great question. And I do offset those. So there is the Indiana Society of Professional Land Surveyors and like also the continuing education for our PS, I take that all out of the corner fund. Also for the Indiana Geographic Information Council that helped maintain some of our public land serving database, I also use the section corner perpetuation fund. So there is a training line in there and I do use that with the PLSS side of my office. Since it's a dedicated fund, that's as much as I can really dip into that. And then all of mine, I think, I would say almost 90% out of my training and travel comes out of the county election fund. I couldn't be, I don't want, I'm pretty certain majority of it does, but like there's a couple of dues here or there at like $45 or something that doesn't get covered from that continuing education line for elected officials. I'm hoping that the state opens that up and allows us to send representation from of our office to use that fund, because as we all know, it's, it's pretty flush with some cash balance in there. So I do my absolute best to manage that. I know that you're working down a deficit and if you think, you know, maybe next year is better to entertain these increases, you know, we can get by again at, but you know, this is kind of what I think is needed and, but I defer to you as far as what's best.
Thanks for saying that. Other counselors? Counselor Wiltz?
So I also think that, that, you know, training and especially in a field like GIS where, you know, it, there's a lot going on and I think it's a good investment for your staff. Your office is one of those that serves so many other departments. So an investment in your office pays it forward, I think, into a lot, you know, the, the clerk's office, for instance, and as well as health department and just on and on. I mean, so many different areas. So I do think it's a good investment. It's, it's a lot and it looks like I'm looking down in the next budget where you said you also have sub-budget and that one stayed flat. Is it, are you able to then flip that maybe and do the increase in the perpetuation fund?
Well, that's kind of what council member McKim was just asking. He said that fund's dedicated, so it stays flat because there's kind of just only some fixed expenses. And if we ever need to kind of transfer, we do an in-house transfer. We didn't see any indication that we needed to do housekeeping this year. And there's probably always actually a bit of a remainder in there. So unfortunately, that wouldn't really be the intent for that fund. There are certain areas, I try to stretch that fund as much as possible. Like for instance, we, we have databases and we need to do SQL scripting and we bought a textbook and I used the miscellaneous line for that because some of that will help the databases where we manage that PLSS data. So it, just really trying to walk that line, not toe it.
I'm just wondering if, if we might, if you think you could still accomplish most of your training needs if we reduce that to $10,000?
Yes. I mean, we, we can get by, you know? This is just, you know, to council member Wilt's comment, this is just kind of one of those investments that does pay, you know, tenfold when we do it, but I, I think it's not going to drastically put us in a bad position. So we can absolutely continue this training initiative and I plan to over the years. So you have a big decision and, you know, I don't fancy your position of trying to figure out how to, you know, make up that difference. So if this helps, absolutely, I would even offer it at this point.
Counsel, I move we reduce line 30028, training slash travel to $10,000.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Surveyor. We've got a motion and a second to amend this line. Any discussion upon there?
Thank you.
Of course.
All right. Saying no further discussion on it, let's do a voice vote. All those in favor of this amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. It's changed. We're back to the underlying budget. Other counselor questions? Right. Well, if no others, we will go to a roll call vote on this budget.
Let's read them.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you. We do need to read that bottom line. Watch me on that, because that's my weak spot. Among many.
Okay, the new bottom line is 323780.
323780. Thank you. All right. Saying no further discussion, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson? Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Let's go on to item B.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review Fund 1202-0000, survey as corner perpetuation with a category request of personnel $113,769, supplies $7,100, services $51,451, capital zero for a total budget of $172,320.
Second.
Mr. Surveyor?
Yes. So everything stays flat. Again, you know, there was no indication of doing any housekeeping. This is a non-reverting fund, so it all goes back into the corner fund. So again, we don't strive to spend down what we have budgeted. It gives us a little flexibility, which is nice. The, the one big change is actually a reduction. We reduce our geodetic control line from 70,000 to 40,000. And I'll just make a, a brief comment about that. Our revenue had dipped and that was not a big issue since, you know, I've been able to kind of create a good, healthy balance there and insulate us from any kind of reduction of revenue coming in, because we do have personnel in there and that's one of my main priorities. So I'm walking back some of the intent to do service agreements. We have been budgeting at a larger amount than our revenue because I intended of wanting to spend about 90,000 down over the last couple of years. But I'm going to slow that goal down just to monitor the revenue and I do feel that it will get back to where it has and this will become a sustainable budget. But I think we have a good buffer for at least four to five years to monitor this where there's not going to be any issue with the personnel if we do have to cash, dip into our reserves. So that's why you see the reduction.
All right. Thank you. We'll go to questions from counselors.
Just want to note that there, I just want to note, want to note that there is a training and travel line in this budget as well of 5,000. And that's where they've been spending a lot of their, they've spent 3,404 of that. So they're, they are spinning out of that perpetuation for training. Did you consider that when you considered how much to reduce the other one?
Yeah, yes. But he, he had addressed that and, and that, that there are certain statutory requirements for restrictions for this fund and that the, the GIS training, for example.
Right, right. I understand that.
Other questions or comments? All right. We'll go to a roll call then on this budget.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night. We'll move on to item number eight, the coroner's office.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review Fund 1000-0007, general fund coroner with the category request of personnel $188,666, supplies $12,000, services $324,800, capital zero for a total budget of $525,466.
Second.
Pleased to welcome the coroner here.
Good evening, counsel. As you can see, we did raise a few things in our budget, mainly to cover the cost of autopsies and transport. That's pretty much it. I try to keep mine short and sweet and to the point and not really move a lot unless I have to. So that's what we have there. If you have any questions, I'm open to that.
Right. Counselor McKim?
So the note that we see under autopsies here says due to fee increase. So it's not so much an increase in the number of autopsies you're having to do, it's just the price per autopsy is going up.
Both. So there has been a fee increase and it's directly related to the facility use that has increased over the years. We have been doing an increased amount of autopsies mainly because they can pursue charges against those who pass from drug overdose. And in order to have all your Ts crossed, Ises dotted, you need that autopsy. So when they go to court, there's no, there's no question that it was directly related to a drug overdose. So.
Being that the dealer is being prosecuted, is that?
Correct. Yes, they can, it's, I think the charge is called dealing resulting in death. So in order for that to be, we've actually sent those who we normally would just do toxicology testing on, we've actually been sending those for autopsies. So we have increased the amount of autopsies we've been doing.
Thank you.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes, when that is tested, can you tell if that's fentanyl in there or, or how?
Yeah, so that comes from the toxicology testing. And the reason you don't see our toxicology line really fluctuate a lot and get more money added to it is because the state, the Indiana State Department of Health, they actually cover the cost of that testing. So it doesn't cost us money, it, the state is consuming that. But yes, through the toxicology testing, they would be able to determine exactly what the substance was. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from counselors? Seeing done, we will go to a roll call vote on this.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Counselor Wiltz? Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Good night. All right. Let's go to item number nine, the clerk's office.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review Fund 1000-0001, general fund clerk with the category request of personnel $2,354,948, supplies $35,000, services $190,600, capital zero for a total budget of $2,588,548.
Second.
All right. We want to welcome the clerk and her team.
Hi. Good evening, members of the council. We got up here quicker than I thought. Thank you so much. It's wonderful to see everyone this evening. Tonight, I am accompanied by the best team this side of heaven. My chief deputy Laura Wirth, administrative assistant Terry Bowman, and election supervisor Kylie Ferris. I am so grateful for them foregoing their quality time with family to be here with me this evening. As you consider our budget request this evening, I ask that you keep top of mind the resounding success that we've had in returning money to county general. In our child support division alone, for all of 2023, we returned $81,082.36. And to date for 2024, we've returned $62,336.95 for a total of $143,419.31 since the beginning of 2023. My hope is that you will take this under advisement as you consider the areas in which we may have had to request more than we otherwise would have for next year's budget. The clerk's office continues to struggle with recruiting and retaining quality staff due to disparate pay in comparison with their court reporter counterparts, as evidenced by the regular attrition of my amazing deputy clerks when an opening becomes available with the Monroe County Circuit Courts. There are few incentives at my disposal to combat, combat this attrition and yet my staff continue to do more with less. I want to acknowledge publicly those hardworking and dedicated Monroe County clerk staff who show up and go above and beyond for Monroe County residents, visitors to the community who wish to access clerk and court services while continuing to fall disproportionately so with respect to their wages. And as you know, wherever possible, we try to keep our request as close to last year's request as possible. Where we could not, I am grateful for your collective consideration and I thank you for your patience. With that, I welcome any questions regarding my request. Thank you.
All right. Counselors, what questions do you have for the clerk? Yes, Counsel Iverson?
Well, thank you all for being here tonight and I too share joy in the fact you got up here so quickly.
Thank you so much.
Nice to have that. My first question tonight is something that I don't think is in your budget. One of the things that people have been talking about is these vote centers and, you know, I presume that that's going to be expensive and I just wanted to hear kind of what you had to say about, you know, what, why that's not in the budget and, and kind of go through that.
We get to the election budget?
Sure. We can wait till we get to the election budget.
Because we're still in general.
All right.
And I have, I will have.
All right. I will. I will pull back on my.
Thank you. Thank you.
Review of question to come. Other, other questions, counselors? Counselor McKim?
Yeah, so I noticed that, that, that the elected official salary has been increased and the chief deputy salary has been increased and I assume that are both of those related to the stipend or is only one of those?
So we didn't touch the tens, so I'm sure you did.
I can hear what you're saying.
The 144, the Form 144. And I, I'm assuming that's where these figures came from.
And then put anything into.
Okay.
Lao. So whatever you put in is what you put in.
Okay. Well, the amounts on the chief deputy and the clerk would have come off of the salary ordinance.
What line are we on? Could you?
Looking right now.
11000.
Thank you.
Just because I thought we weren't talking about increases for salaries for elected officials at this discussion.
Yeah, we're not at that or COLA. So.
The only thing that makes sense to me is the voter registration stipend, not the one passed this year, but previous that, that I, I asked for twice a year. But the election board component is folded into my regular salary.
I guess are we waiting for?
Yeah, I'm going to look that up in a second. Sorry.
We'll take a second to figure this out. We're doing okay on time.
So that is the same. Just a quick note, I just looked at my own chief deputy clerk, Laura, that, that, that is the amount that I was hired in for this year was the 68,801. So seeing in 2025, there was no increase.
Okay, I remember what happened now. I'm sorry. So last year, when you guys made those changes with the COLA increases and that kind of thing, there was, no one was available to make those changes in Lao. So they did not include any of the COLA or anything else. So what?
So what you are seeing is actually what is being paid for this year. So it's like, I'm going, there was a reason, but I couldn't remember.
Okay, but what they've requested is correct, not reflecting any increase.
Correct.
Thank you so much.
Sorry.
Sorry about that.
Would not do that. I would not do that to you, Counsel.
Because it's not just those two, there's several.
Yes.
I, I, that.
Yes.
Kim's explanation.
Yeah, like last year, you made a final cola amount.
Yes.
And there was no one available in the Clerk's Office to make all of those changes. So we moved forward, knowing that you guys moved forward and approved their budget, knowing that at some point they were going to have to come back and either ask for an additional or something to that effect. So, yeah, I remember right now, so.
And now I. Are they getting run out of money?
The Counselor Iverson's hand.
And Mr. President, I understand which budget we're on, so I will ask a germane question.
You're doing great.
I wanted to talk about your postage line that's in the threes, the 30800. Obviously, you do a lot of postage, but my question is more on what has been expended out of that, that budget. It seems like a very small amount has been expended. I just wanted to know a little bit more about that budget line.
So with respect to the request, we do, we do, of course, the mail for both the courts and the clerks. Where we can keep, where we can mail it cheaper, we make every effort to do that. I have an amazing colleague who will let us know if flat rate is better than any other kind of rate. My increases with respect to the fact that we have had two postage increases this year, and we've received information that the United States Postal Service anticipates increasing the rates even more. So I was afraid to hold it at. If you're looking it up, please go ahead.
My computer is updating, and so I have to look at my phone.
I understand.
I'm not, I'm not ignoring you.
So where I, where I might have otherwise asked for exactly what I asked for previously with that anticipated increase, and we are responsible for both mailing out clerk and court mail and that increase. That is, that is my perspective in terms of my request.
Yeah, the, the request is flat, though. You asked for $65,000 last year and $65,000 this year. Am I not understanding?
I, I think I thought you were asking me about an increase and so.
No, my question was, you're asking for $65,000, but as of, was it June 30th? You've only spent $955.
So we had some reserve, I guess that carried over and.
Oh, so when you pay into postage, that money sits in the postage system?
Right.
And it doesn't revert back into?
They have a meter, and so they put that into the meter, so.
Got it. So you've built up credit, so to speak.
I think it tends to even out because we'll get at different times of the year. So, for example, when the students leave, they hurry up and file all of these claims if they haven't paid their rent. Toward the end of the year, when students are going home for Christmas but might not come back, then the courts are, you know, so we get, it goes in spurts and we can get, it's feast or famine. But I promise you, mail goes out every day from the clerk's.
How much is, how much credit do you have in the postage right now?
I, I, I don't know. We just get, we get the bill and we pay the bill.
The Auditor's Hand.
Yeah, I just looked at a history. So expended through the end of last year, the total amount, let's see, we had remaining out of the $65,000 appropriation, $31,980.69 remaining. So that reverted.
Almost half.
That's how they're using it now.
That's what she handed down.
Other questions, comments? I'm looking around. We good or more?
And can you scroll back over again? My computer decided that right now is a great time to update Windows.
And of, and of course, what we don't expend returns to you.
If you're looking, they currently for this year have 65. And in 2023, their budget was $35,000, but they only expended $3,000. And some of that may be due to what was it held in reserve in the meter, so.
We don't know how much is in reserve in that meter.
No.
2023. Okay. So if we were trying to save money, this might be a good place to grab, knowing that obviously you need to mail, and if you needed more money, you could come to us. We're not going to keep you from mailing. But in the spirit of, you know, I mean, but did I hear you correctly that there are about at half that amount in terms of how much they've been spending?
Yes, so we started with a $65,000 appropriation, $30,000 it looks like was deappropriated. And then the total expended was, let me make sure I'm looking at the right column here. Was $26,966.
We reduced to 40. That should be enough. Good. And I'm looking for confirmation that my logic is remotely right.
Based upon the credit and what has been.
Well, I don't know what the credit is, but based upon previous spending.
Right.
Forty should be enough. That's a reduction of $25,000 in the request. So I move that we reduce the postage line, which is 30800, by $25,000.
Second.
But a motion and a second on this reduction, comments on the amendment to the budget. I, I would add to, of course, we're looking to find, at about a $1.2 million deficit, looking for ways that we can find that. What I would say is, I would support this with the notion that when it is needed or determined it's needed, that we need more money for this function, that we would do that.
And I agree.
Yeah.
What I'm seeing from counselors is that we would, and that we would make that an easy process on.
You'll remember this meeting that you said that.
Well, I'll remember when you'll say it.
I remember you saying.
I would say, I'd like to put the counsel in remembrance.
Madam Clerk, what did I say?
I will absolutely remind you.
Well, it's recorded. You can play it back even.
But with that, with that notion in mind, I think that that's a good, kind of get us through the minute fix.
And.
Yeah.
And it can also transfer, just with letter of transfer, you don't have to come back to get it, the, what you need in there timely.
Please say it again.
You can do in-house transfers, as what is she saying?
Transfer within the same category without waiting whatsoever, so that you've got that postage when you need it.
Thank you.
All right, other comments? Just, well, we've got the amendment. Let's just go ahead. Voice vote on the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we've carried that. We're back to the underlying budget. Any further questions or discussion, counselors? Not seeing any, so we will go to a roll call vote. Let's, let's read the bottom line on this one.
Yes, the new bottom line for the category for services is $165,600, which then changes the entire General Fund budget for the Clerk to $2,555,548.
Thank you very much. Thanks all for keeping me on that. All right. So now we can go to a roll call on that.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, let's go to Budget B, Clerk's Perpetuation.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review Fund 1119-0000, Clerk's Perpetuation with the category request of Personnel $89,416, Supplies $2,000, Services $50,500, Capital zero, for a total budget of $141,916.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Counselors, this revenue-driven fund has, as I've told you in previous budget sessions, increasingly dwindled over the years due to more records being accessed electronically. We continue to monitor this fund diligently, and we only utilize the minimum amount necessary to pay salaries and expenses related to my statutory duty to maintain and preserve court records. We do hope to replace our antiquated book scanner that has aged to the point that the large pane of glass that holds the book down fell onto one of my employees' heads. Thank goodness, thank goodness, he didn't stain injuries. But my point is that because we've been judicious with this fund, I hope to replace the current scanner using the perpetuation fund, which means that I would ask for no additional appropriations from the Council because that would not be necessary. Thank you.
How far was the fall?
I'm going to encourage you to go visit the Recorder's Office because I believe they have a book scanner, but there's two plates, a plate that the book lays on, and then the big glass, and it's a thick glass that goes down to hold the book down, and we take an image of that, and that's how we. And so it's, it's old. It was purchased by my predecessor during her time as clerk. And so one day he was just doing his job and it came down on it, it came detached and fell on his head. And it is so old that we don't have a maintenance agreement. We had to pay someone, and they came from Wisconsin to replace that, that glass. So we were just incredibly fortunate. Please buy a lottery ticket if you think about that story on your way home, because nothing like that has happened since then, but it is time. It's, it's age is showing. Thank you.
Questions? Counselor Hawk.
Right, are these purchases supposed to go through IT first or maintenance with?
I, I'm happy to consult with the Recorder on that. I know that she recently purchased a book scanner. And we're hopeful for one that's comparable to the model that she purchased. And so I'm, I'm happy to follow whatever procedure she followed for the same reason.
Right, just, just as long as we get something that's easily maintained because somebody's going to have to take care of it. And sometimes.
And I'm happy to purchase a maintenance, a preventative maintenance. That one had aged to the point that it was no longer cost effective for us to maintain. It was going to just be cheaper to roll the dice and pay for a repair than it was to, to pay for the maintenance agreement when the time came to extend. I'm hopeful that I made that make sense.
So have you ordered it?
We have, no, no, I'm, I'm just letting you know, my goal for 2025 is I talked to you about the perpetuation fund that I hope to meet with vendors and look at the, look at the Recorder's book scanner and purchase one comparable, and I will not need to ask.
It's not falling on anybody's head again. We've been notified.
You've been notified. Thank you. And he's, he's fine. I want to reassure you, he's fine.
All right, further questions, comments? All right, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, let's go to item C, the Election Fund Voter Registration.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review Fund 1215-0010, Election Fund Voter Registration with the category request of Personnel $167,760, Supplies $3,000, Services $31,500, Capital zero, for a total budget of $202,260.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
This one's pretty, pretty simple. Wherever possible, we try to hold as close to what we've previously requested for this budget. The increases that are requested, as we talked about earlier, anticipated increase in postage because we will do a lot of voterless maintenance in 2025 and have to notify voters via mail that their polling site or voting information could have changed, as well as an increase in dues that was passed along to the clerks. My colleague is very astutely noting that we actually requested less than this.
You're underselling yourself.
So where, where possible, I look out for you, sir.
All right, questions for the Clerk? Is this the appropriate place for Peter to ask his question?
It's not.
It's the next one.
Oh, this is voter registration.
Yeah. He'll get his.
Counselor Iverson.
Well, I will note is just because of the conversation we just had, there is another postage line here, and this budget decreased.
Yes.
We tried to be decent. If we didn't spend a whole lot, we tried to be decent. And I can probably offset it with postage in elections. And so where we can, we try.
I, I appreciate that, and I'm, I'm sure.
But I'll, I'll hold you to what the Chair said earlier in that if I should need postage, I'm hopeful that you will remember this touching moment between us.
And when did I say that? I'm just, I saw the Attorney's Hand.
Yeah. Just like to note that in 2023, nothing was expended from that line, postage.
And I, I do have a question, and this is part of my past vocation, but that, that postage you anticipate for that year or next year, is that voterless maintenance that
voterless maintenance.
You've got to maintain for your functions.
As you might imagine, depending on what the project is and how much postage is anticipated, sometimes we take it out of our election postage line, sometimes we take it out of voter registration line. So I wouldn't count on getting that lucky next year in terms of us not expending postage in both postage lines. Fair?
In today's climate, accounting like ours not doing voterless maintenance could find themselves being sued by very special interest groups out there, so it's a smart move. Any other questions on this? All right, seeing done, let's go to a roll call vote.
Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk? Motion passed unanimously.
Right, item D, Election Fund, Election Board.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review Fund 1215-0062, Election Fund, Election Board, with the category request of Personnel $142,311, Supplies $51,000, Services $173,000, Capital zero, for a total budget of $366,311.
Second.
Okay, and I will attempt to answer this in my presentation, trying to keep it short for you, sir. Regrettably, my fellow election board colleagues are unable to be with me this evening. However, I'll direct you to today's earlier election board meeting where I specifically asked them what they wanted me to tell the Council in terms of their support for the election budget request, and they concurred that they were supportive of my request. The only concern mentioned is, I believe, goes to Councilman Iverson's question is should voters, vote centers receive a positive recommendation to the election board? One of the board members asked where that funding would come from. At the, we anticipate a recommendation from the Vote Center Study Committee at the end of the year. It did not make sense to me to try to ask for quotes or anything that we would be beholden to prior to getting that recommendation. And what I explained, I, I explained how the election fund works in that any monies that are not spent go back into the election fund as it has happened since my predecessor was clerk. Although we don't anticipate a special election in 2025, we have received correspondence from the legal representative for the Richland Bean Blossom Community School Corporation. The Clerk's Association was not successful in their legislative efforts during the last session at the State House to have no special elections and have public questions appear on ballots in the years where there are already elections scheduled. As you consider the election request for what is hoped will be the off-election year, please note that should we be compelled to have a special election in 2025, I will have to return to the council to request additional appropriations. We can recoup some, but not all of those appropriations following the special election because the requesting entity can be billed. And as I explained to the election board earlier, any unexpended monies will roll back into the election fund. And with that, I'm hopeful that I not only answered your question, but I'm prepared to address any other questions.
Question asked, question answered. I'm satisfied.
All right. Counselor Hawke.
Boy, I was asleep at the wheel for sure. You're saying Richland Bean Blossom?
We have, we have received from their legal representative correspondence regarding a project that they want to do. I, I have not been asked to facilitate a special election at this time. I am telling you though, that we lost that battle. The Clerks Association lost that battle with the school corporation in this past legislative session. And so should they decide to put a public question on the ballot? And their preference is to do that when everybody can focus on it. They don't want to put it on in a year where we have an actual election. They won, we did not. I'll have to come back and request funds.
And we don't even know what it is they want it for?
So there's a whole process to request the, the question and how it appears on the ballot and everything. So I just know it's a project. I called the legal representative who authored the letter and asked, should I interpret this as your intent to have us hold a special election? And he did not have that information at this, so I don't, I don't know anything about anything when it comes to the school board. I'm letting you know though, that if we get that question, we lost the fight to not have to have that in 2025.
This, this is, I heard, I heard a mention of something, I thought they meant that Monroe County Schools was asking for another referendum. Because the Richard Bean Blossom, we have the highest taxes in the entire county for our school system. How could they possibly think they're going to get more on top of that? Well, I need to go to school board meeting, don't I?
Someone other than me. Because I will just, if, if Indiana Election Division tells me, yes, you have to have this election, ma'am, I have to have the election and I'll be back and I hope you'll remember me at that time.
Well, here's the unfortunate thing is if you try to have a special election and people just don't show up for those special elections, you think they are not smart enough to figure that out. And that's how they get these things through and it should not even be legal to do it.
And Madam Councilwoman, as Chair of the Legislative Committee, I have testified to exactly what you've said on behalf of all 92. No clerk wants to have a special election. Some of them, as I understand it, are already being told that they will have an election in 2025. I am letting you know tonight that Monroe County is not on that list. But if I, if our number's up and I have to come back, I'm hopeful that you'll be merciful because we will get to bill them and get some of it. We won't recoup all of our costs, but we can make them pay for as much as we can and we will, so I promise you that my team and I will work together to, to bill them for as much as we possibly can. That's as, that's as much as I can offer you tonight, Madam Councilwoman.
I, I personally wish they wouldn't do it just because the cost of all the time on social media in this county alone will give us all migraine. Um, anyway, though, that's for them to decide. I'm sure they have comments for us as well. Any other questions or comments? Certainly good food for thought. All right. Anything else? Let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor McKinn?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
That completes the clerks' budgets.
Thank you so very much. I appreciate your time. I hope everyone has a wonderful rest of your budget session.
Thank you.
You all. Let's move on to item number 10, the prosecutor.
Counsel. Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund one thousand dash zero 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 nine, general fund prosecutor with a category request of personnel two million nine hundred two thousand five hundred eighty seven dollars, supplies eleven thousand five hundred, services one hundred thirty thousand five hundred fifty dollars, capital zero, for a total budget of three million forty four thousand six hundred thirty seven dollars.
Second.
All right, we want to welcome our Monroe County Prosecutor, Erica Alafon, along with Beth Hamlin.
All right. Thank you so much. I'm going to stay on task and be fast, but I just want to take a brief moment to give you an update. As you recall, for last year's budget, you gave me a significant pay increase for deputy prosecutors by moving them to 40 hours. And I just wanted to let you know that in 2023, we had 64 weeks of deputy prosecuting attorney vacancy. But in 2024, I'm happy to report that we only had 14 weeks.
Wow. Yay.
So the quality and quantity of applications has gone up since you approved that. And I just wanted to thank you for that, that consideration. I know it was a, a bit of a painful ask last year, so thank you. Um, you know, I'll give you the good news just to, uh, remind you that I try to save you money when I can. We have decided to forego a paralegal position that we've had for many years and replace it with a legal secretary position, which is at a lower classification. So, uh, we did that partially just for sort of equity amongst our staff doing the intake functions. But, um, I hope that you can appreciate that we're spending a little bit less money on that admin stuff. Um, the big ask this year, um, as you know, for many years, the pretrial diversion fund has been decreasing. We pay two full-time positions out of that fund. The, uh, pretrial diversion director who administers and monitors the pretrial diversion program and the infraction diversion director who does the same for infractions. And he also, uh, enters, does intake for our citations. And he does traffic as well. So, um, it's anticipated, uh, that we, you know, we will have an annual revenue this year of one hundred and thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty eight dollars in the, in pretrial diversion. But the annual expenditures this year are one hundred and forty one thousand seven hundred and eighty. So, um, we expect a shortfall of about twenty eight thousand dollars in our pretrial diversion fund. So I, I know it's a big ask, but I will just remind the council of the importance of pretrial diversion and infraction diversion. Not as a fund generating source, um, we do waive funds for anybody who's indigent and can't afford to pay those dues or those, those fees and costs. But it does divert hundreds of cases from the court docket. It prevents convictions on criminal records that have long-term collateral impacts on those who are charged with those low-level offenses, um, and gives them sort of a, a second chance. It helps keeps people's driver's licenses valid and, and them insured and safe to drive on the road. So they are really important programs for the court system and for our community as a whole. I don't want to, uh, spend too much time pontificating, but, um, you know, I think I've tried to give you all a little bit of warning that this was coming eventually and, and it's time. So if you have any questions about that, um, please let me know. I, I would just say to you, another little bit of money we might be able to give back to you. Unfortunately, the state of Indiana seems to be moving on from prosecutors offices uh, as the provider for adult protective services. We do have a contract with FSSA that ends June 30th of 2025, which is, you know, they're on the state fiscal year. So unfortunately, unless they decide they want to keep us, um, we're, we're going to lose that program and therefore we will lose that, that staff. And so, um, that would probably be a savings of about twenty six thousand dollars on their health, dental and life that, that you have graciously been paying out of the county general fund. So if you have any questions on that, I'm happy to answer them.
I see several and I have one myself. Counselor McKinn.
So while, you know, o- o- over the years, we've been dealing with this pretrial diversion, but Beth, Beth and I have been.
We go back.
We go way back on, on this issue and, um, I mean, this, this fund used to subsidize, what, three, four positions in county general?
More than that.
And now, you know, we were, uh, obviously this is, this is being flipped. I'm wondering, would it be possible to move just half of the position in, uh, in the county general? Would that, would you be able to get by?
I think it's going to be very close. Our, my, my projected, um, year-end balance in that fund cash balance for 2024 is about fifty four hundred dollars. Um, and then you look, you know, we're operating at a twenty eight thousand dollar deficit this year. Uh, I mean, we could try it, I suppose. I don't know. Um, I think it's a little slippery slope, you know, revenues have continued to decrease every year. I mean, if you don't do it this year, it'll be next year. And I may and likely would end up back here next year asking. Revenues, like I said, just continue to plummet, which is fine, you know, that's not what the fund is for. But I don't anticipate some sort of, you know, jump in the revenues or anything.
Thank you.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes. Um, the other day when I mentioned something about down the pike, are we ever going to consider a work release center again? And the response was, oh, well, the courts wouldn't like that because they like that pretrial diversion program. So, um, I know that's putting you on the spot. You don't have to answer me now, but give it some thought. Are you saying that you would rather have pretrial diversion rather than have work release? That's my question. Do I have to answer it? Or just think about it? The other, uh, thing that I wanted to ask about was the, uh, I, I really didn't expect an answer, you know, because that's kind of like putting you on the spot. Unless you'd like to answer that question.
I'm happy to answer. I don't think, um, the pretrial diversion fund and the work release center sort of serve two different populations. So pretrial diversion are low-level, low-risk offenders who usually never see the jail. Whereas work release tends to be an alternative to incarceration for those who are higher risk and higher level of offenses.
I believe the judges were, were referring to pretrial release, not the pretrial diversion program.
Okay. And which case I choose pretrial.
At any rate, okay. I'm just saying I was kind of shocked to hear that response, uh, that was given to me when I mentioned it. The other thing is with the adult protection, uh, part, that will the state then take that over? And will, will those people who are working those positions, will they then be working for the state and not in your office at all? Or how would that work?
Yeah. It's a, it's a very open question that's in flux at this moment. I will tell you, I have grave concerns. They're going to get an operative program in place by July 1st. And basically their intention, FSSA's intention is to contract it out, to continue to contract it out rather than create like a Department of Child Services comparable agency to do the work. And they're planned to release a, a request for proposals to see who bids on it. I think they're kind of leaning towards, um, putting some pressure on the area agent, uh, agencies on aging. But I don't believe that those, um, those folks are going to be capable of, of handling it. So I will tell you that the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council, I'm the Chair of the Adult Protective Services Committee and we are discussing submitting a bid. What's frustrating about that is we, I would argue that we've been submitting a bid for 17 years. We've been telling them that we don't have the funding to do the job. And there's a lot of efficiencies built into having it in my office where we already have attorneys and support staff and, and a lot of things like that. So, you know, I'm trying to keep my finger on the pulse of, of it and, but there's, there's a lot of questions still. And I'm really worried for our aging population and, and those with significant mental health and developmental disabilities.
Because it's not, not just Monroe County. How, what was the other, it covers more than just Monroe County, correct?
Yep. So the Adult Protective Services covers the entire state, but my office, uh, is responsible for Owen County, Morgan County and Monroe County.
Got them in.
Yeah. Right. Any other que-
Question from Counsel Wiltz?
Have a question, I think. I think it's a question. Along the lines of trying to maybe not put that position in the, move it into general fund. What about public safety lit?
Doesn't, doesn't give us anything.
Doesn't help us.
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody booed that idea.
I guess so.
Get outside the box and I like it. Just try to help.
I, I wanted to add to the discussion on this change from the state. That is exceedingly concerning. I can remember undergrad criminology 101. They're talking about Indiana is a state that really puts empowerment to prosecutors to do adult protective services, all of these things. And the demographics suggest we should be going the other way. Enhancing your dollars, getting in, in there with the vulnerable populations. I, I worry that this is going to be a generational disaster, um, for our, our seniors. So I, I'm glad that you told us about it. I'm a little horrified by it. And one of the functions that I think happens a lot, and I think your office is a conduit for it, is the services that need to be done in the state get passed to local government. And this is a tremendously good example. And we know that we've had, you know, in years and years past, we had DCS issues on the other end of the spectrum age-wise. And that is a population, I think, with a lot more screaming advocates. This is, this is something we've all got to keep on our radars for sure. Thank you. Other questions, comments? Counselor Munson?
So, so my hand was up, um, on this very same subject. And, um, thank you, thank you for your discussion on this and, and fellow counselors for their, uh, for their comments. I would ask that, um, our concern is great enough that we'd like you to come back and give us more information outside of the, the budget process. And, um, just keep us better informed about what might be possible for Monroe County government in our, uh, partner counties. And I do agree that it's tough for Area 10 to, to tackle yet more when they have, um, a pretty full plate already. So.
I'm not sure that they are enthusiastic about that prospect. Oh, and.
Yeah.
FSSA has made it clear they don't intend to keep my staff. I don't think I answered that question. So I'm going to have a few people looking for jobs too. So it's, I, I'd be happy to come back and discuss it whenever you guys have some time on your agenda.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea.
Let's have a good community conversation about this.
Love to.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Michelle and Courtney, can you kind of make a note of that for it? Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. I, I mean, just even, just expanding on that a little bit with Area 10. We're struggling to keep rural transit going or some sort of function of it. But I'm envisioning rural transit drivers having to eyeball windows and doorways and run in like MacGyver or something. I, I don't know how this is going to work exactly and I'm not sure the state does either. Anyway, that's not ours for right now, but it will be eventually. Other questions, comments from the council? All right. We'll go to a roll call on this budget.
On, on which? No. Oh, I had no questions.
Nope, sorry. Uh, roll call on Budget 10A.
Are you calling? Okay.
Unless there's other questions or comments.
She does.
Well, I'm looking at it and is this like the position you were talking about before? The one that is fifty nine thousand nine hundred and thirty three dollars?
Are you looking for the line? The line. It's a. Line one five, one, one, five.
Right. Is that the same one you were talking about moving over?
Yes, that's the pretrial diversion director.
So do we change that? We're not going to move it over there, are we?
What else are we going to do?
Well, I mean, they, they don't have the money. I, I, I tried and I mean, I'd be open to trying 50%, but they clearly don't have the money to, uh, to keep a hundred percent in pretrial diversion.
I mean, the least we can do is do half and then they may have, you know, have you ever heard? have you ever heard tell a, you know, reduction in staff? When somebody leaves, you don't replace them? Because at some point in time, we're going to give everybody a raise. We can't just keep passing everything.
Yeah, but we don't want the, I, I don't, I don't want to see pretrial diversion end. I mean, I
No. Well, so I'm just saying, could you do like half? And then if it doesn't work, you know, Beth isn't afraid to come talk with us. She comes pretty often.
I, I would go the other way, but to that sentiment on the half, I would love to try the half with the same promise that we made to the clerk just a moment ago on
About the postage?
About postage. I think if you can do it on postage, you can do that on the function and need. I mean, we do it all the time. We're in here all the time needling this copy machine transfer or whatever. I think this is
You can do 75 and 25.
Right.
The diversion have 25%.
That might be
That seemed a little more comfortable. I don't know. The numbers Beth gave me make me uncomfortable with half.
I'm sorry, Jeff.
Are you going to pay these folks?
How, how about this? I'll offer this. Is there unanimous consent to take a 75-25 split on that?
Just give it a shot, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
The objection.
Microphones. I just want to make sure that the numbers do indeed work for that split.
How do you mean? Based on the projected revenue? I mean, it's going to be shaving it close. I would offer again, the $26,000 that is not going to be used of the health dental life. I mean, that would be low hanging fruit. We're not going to have APS staff after June 30th. That's a half a year's health dental life for those folks. If it's something we know we're not going to need, we could maybe start there.
How much did you say that was?
$26,000 for four positions for half the year.
For the adult protection, is that what you're saying?
Yes, because we've been underfunded.
We get it. Okay.
Counselors, you kind of heard two different options. That's pretty wise. What do you, what do you, what do you want to do here?
A sense. If we, if we left this position where it is, that 26, yeah. I mean, it's just going to even out. However, you want to place it.
The number here, that's in the 18001, the self insurance includes the pretrial diversion director.
Correct.
So you're saying you're reducing that by how much?
We are proposing or suggesting that you could, because we just recently confirmed that the APS program is going from our office June 30th. You have for the last several years paid the health dental life for our four full-time APS staff. They're going to be gone June 30th. So that 26,000 reduction in the health dental life would be money that we know we're not going to spend because the staff's not going to be there.
Thank you.
And that might offset.
All right, let's go ahead and take that. Counsel, I move we reduce line 18001 full-time self insurance to $429,000.
Okay.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion on the amendment? Counsel Iverson.
I just want to make it really clear. These folks have put in a lot of good work, and we really appreciate the work the APS staff have done. My wife is one of those, and those folks have done an amazing job. And I want to, as we are kind of winding this down, just recognize the amazing work that they've done. And I don't want it all that this is seen as we're rushing people out the door.
Well, we're not.
I know, I know, but you know.
We're trying to keep
You know what people say.
There's something could be determined otherwise, we could figure that out for sure.
But is the, sorry.
Yeah, no.
Is the, is that line calculated? Just based on a formula with the, the positions though? So this is complicated from your standpoint, right?
Yeah, but that's okay.
Okay.
It's, it, yeah.
That's why I'm so confused. I'm like, well, normally just put in like, you know,
If you look at that note, it shows that the four adult protective services people are included in.
It says including, you know, their veteran, or voca, the victim assistance. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah. I've done it enough with them. I know, I know what's going on. Good.
Somebody does. Some crazy math. Okay.
All right. So we, as I recall, we have a motion in a second. Have we taken?
I'm sorry, we didn't get that.
Counselor Hawke.
Counselor, thank you.
That I know. All right. So we've got the motion second. Any further discussion on this? Let's go ahead on the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes carry. Okay, now back to the underlying budget. Further discussions, comments? Counsel Munson?
It seems only right that we would talk about postage here too. And I'm looking at your bottom line 30800 postage request of 9,000 and expenditure through half this year of $402. Surely we should be able to knock 5,000 off of this every
That would, I can live with that, and I'll come back if we need to mail.
We, it's, it's now become a standard phrase here. Come on back.
Come on back.
Is that a motion?
I move, I move reduction of line 30800 to $5,000.
All right, we're taking. Motion in a second. Any discussion on that? Seeing none. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, back to the underlying budget. Anyone got any other things they want to offer? Beth goes, I think we've heard enough. You've done a great. All right, let's go to a roll call then on the underlying budget.
I know.
And it's just, oh, we do need a
The new number.
The new number. We'll get that just a second.
This is the hard one.
The next one is?
No.
Easy from here.
Smooth sailing after this.
Just cause.
Kind of would right now.
We'll see when we get through it.
Okay, so we had a reduction in the personnel line. So it, the category went to 2,876,587. The category for services is reduced to 126,550 for a total budget of $3,014,637.
Thank you. So we've got that underlying number.
It's just too much.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. We'll go to a roll call on the underlying budget.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke? Counselor Deckard? Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Did you say, she said pass?
I said pass.
She passed. Not unanimous.
Apologize. Motion passed six to zero to one pass.
Before we go to item B, I do want to thank counselors and elected officials and department leadership for looking through this, thinking through this, doing the work. This is part of what we do. So thank you for doing that. All right, B.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review on 1,000-0660 General Fund Child Support with a category request of Personnel, $1,433,524, Supplies $4,000, Services $45,800, capital zero, or a total budget of $1,483,324.
Second.
All right, so just a reminder, all expenses from our child support fund are reimbursed by the federal government via the state at approximately 67%. So this is the happy land of milk and honey for budgets. But other than our projected step salary increases, there have been no changes to this budget from the last year.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes, it doesn't benefit us to start cutting this budget. For the public.
And where did the money come from? The federal dollars?
Yep, it is reimbursement that we receive when we have to do. There are certain child support cases that are mandatory for us. If someone is on TANA for other federal assistance, we have to seek reimbursement in the form of child support payments. And so we receive reimbursement for that.
Other?
This is just so important.
Other comments or questions?
I have a question.
Yes, counselor.
So is, are you saying that 60 some percent of your child support cases are involving people on a federal assistance type program?
I don't think it breaks down like that. It's just how much money we get for doing it.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Yes, Counsel Iverson.
I note that in the threes, you have a total of four funds where you haven't expended a single dollar. That is phones and pagers, library extradition, and maintenance agreement. Again, I, this is an important fund, but I'm just curious as to what's going on there.
You know, I just kept it the same. We did not spend anything in any of those. I mean, if you want to reduce them, that's fine with me.
Yeah, I think sometimes things like extradition
Oh, yeah, I would not.
Are
Yes.
Are somewhat unpredictable. It just depends on if we have people who are in other jurisdictions that we have to go and get. And so having some space available to do that without dipping into my general fund or my extradition fund would be ideal for me. But, yeah, I mean, this is, this is a fund I don't want to lash too much. We can avoid it, but
I understand that sensitivity.
Yeah. And I will also point out that we do have a travel training line here. However, our absolute practice for as long as I've been here is to pay for the travel and training for any child support staff out of our incentive fund, which we don't get the reimbursement for, but we have to use it for child support purposes. So we always pay our travel training out of that. So it's not that they're not going to travel or, I mean, to training, but we pay that from our incentive fund.
Yeah, yeah.
So could your incentive fund? Sorry.
No, go ahead, Counsel.
Could you use that incentive fund in other ways and, and start using this where you're going to get 60% back? Or is that not helpful? I forget what you can use the incentive for.
Any, well, within some limitations, anything pertaining to the child support program. However, there was a point in time when the incentive fund was also reimbursed at 67%. It is no longer reimbursed. So, you know, we could potentially move some things over there for a period of time, but you're really only saving, you know, 30 cents on the dollar or whatever.
Well, we're looking for every penny on the dollar.
You know, that's, but whether.
Other comments, questions? All right. Seeing none. We'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, let's go to item C.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund 1155-0000 extradition. Yeah, you got it. With the category request of Personnel, $538, Supplies zero, Services zero, capital zero, for a total budget of $538.
Second.
Right.
Okay, well, as you can see, this is not our biggest fund. We made no changes this year. Extradition funds are used for getting fugitives from justice, from out of state and bringing them here. And so this is really just in case we use local personnel to pay them overtime to bring them back. We do, as a matter of practice, try to recoup extradition expenses from those people that we extradite. Of course, many of them are indigent and are not going to pay that, but we at least go through the effort to try. But at any rate, that's, that's what that fund is. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Right, counselors? Yes, Counselor Hawke?
So how does the process work that you would use those lines? Do you contact the sheriff's office and say you need them to do X, Y, and Z? Or, or do they contact you and say, now we have to do this? We'd like you to take it out of this fund? Or how does that work?
It's a back and forth. They, so the sheriff's office typically notifies us of any requests to extradite somebody from another state. We make a decision whether we want to bring them back or leave them there. And, and then we coordinate bringing them back and, and the costs and, and things associated with that.
And so it's only if it's out of state. It's not like if they're going north in Indiana or something.
Correct. That's not, we don't typically use the same process if they're within the state of Indiana. It's more of just a transport function at that point.
And I, oh, sorry, go ahead. I was just going to add that this is almost a dormant fund, to be perfectly honest. I don't think we're at a point where we can put it to sleep entirely, but it, we very rarely use it. I haven't used it in 10 years, probably.
A dormant fund. Let that auditor hear. You've got a dormant fund. We'll stop that.
Best fugitives, the better. Here we go. Any other comments? Let's go to a roll call vote.
Just a minute. What if on that dormant fund almost? If we just took everything down to leave those lines there and just put like one in all of those? And then, so you're not getting rid of the fund? And then, how much would that, that would allow us to have 500 and some dollars?
But it's not county general.
Right.
The revenue to this is from fugitives that are repaying the cost of their extradition goes into this fund. This is
Oh, okay. So that's not helpful. Well, I tried.
You try them.
Try.
What's the balance in that fund?
I think it's around 1,000.
Oh, is, okay.
Yeah.
Really? All right. Yeah, this seems appropriate.
$4 million extradition. Something like that. All right, any other comments, questions? Let's go to a roll call, I think.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard? Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, item D.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund 1170-0000, I'm sorry, 1170-0009 Public Safety Lit Prosecutor with a category request of Personnel, $141,243, Supplies zero, Services zero, Capital zero, or a total budget of $141,243.
All right, thank you. As a reminder, this pays half of the salary, 50% of the salary for two grant funded positions from the stop grant. We made no changes from 2024 to this request.
Questions? Counselor Hawke?
Yes, when does this grant expire?
We get it renewed annually. So I, I, we're, I think we're on the state budget cycle.
Yes, we are. It runs 71 to 630.
So have you heard anything from?
We've been, we've been funded for another year.
Okay, that's my question.
Yep.
Other questions or comments?
And as a reminder, the reason that's in there is because they had the grant. And so that was added on there. So the grant goes away. We normally say We normally say if you lose a grant, you lose, lose the person. Now, I'm not saying that's, nobody's standing over as forcing us to do that, but that used to be the rule, and we may have to make it the rule again on some of these things, simply because we're short a little money. How mu, are we still, we're still at least a million short, right? Before we, before anybody gets any raise, still a million short.
I believe the language about grants is on each new hire that we have. I know because when we did that a few years back, I, I received a lot of feedback on that. Not everybody was real happy with that, but I do believe that language is still there. Regarding grant funding may not be a determinant if it would change or roll off. Other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
And item E?
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund twenty five zero three dash zero 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 diversion user fees with a category request of personnel, seventy thousand five hundred fifteen dollars, supplies zero, services five hundred fifty dollars, capital five hundred dollars, for a total budget of seventy one thousand five hundred sixty five dollars.
Second.
Okay, well, I spoiled the punchline on this one during my general presentation, but the, the only change was to move the pretrial diversion director position out of this fund and into county general.
Counselor McKim?
So I, I just had a thought, you know, we were before kind of talking about, well, could we move half? Or could we move a quarter of the position back into this, into this budget? It just occurred to me, why don't we just, why don't we just move the health insurance back for this position back into this fund? So it would add thirteen thousand to the budget, but I, you could probably handle that. And then it's a little cleaner anyway, because.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that, yeah.
All right, counsel, I move we set line eighteen zero zero one full time self insurance to thirteen thousand dollars.
Second.
All right, we've got an amendment here. Any discussion?
Just that we'll have to, then reopen the, the general fund budget and reduce it by another thirteen thousand.
Any further discussion? Let's do this by voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is carried, we're to the underlying budget. Any further discussion or comments on it? Seeing none, we will go to a roll call on that.
Which I believe is full time self insurance.
Never get it.
Your Achilles heel.
I'm admitting.
Okay, we have a new personnel total of eighty three five one five and a total budget of eighty four five sixty five.
Got the underlying numbers there for this budget.
And I'm sorry, which, it's not showing on the screen right now. Which, which one? The one that we just moved money back into is that, okay.
Yeah. Any, you, can you restate the numbers just one more time so we have it?
The personnel category is eighty three five one five. The new grand total for the fund is eighty four five sixty five.
I think the.
The pretrial diversion fund. That's, okay. When, when you say grand total for the fund, and I was, that's what I was trying to figure out what we were voting on. Thank you.
Counselor Iverson, did you want to?
Because we were talking about.
It is not determined.
The others.
So we've got the underlying numbers. Let's go to a roll call. If there's no further discussion, all right.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley? Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Counsel, I move that we reopen fund one zero zero zero, location zero 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 nine prosecutor and amend or reduce line. Uh, why did I just lose it? Reduce line one eight zero zero one, full time self insurance by thirteen thousand dollars to four hundred sixteen thousand dollars.
Second.
We've got a motion to open this with an amended, some amended language. Any discussion?
Thank you for working with us.
Yeah, thank you. Any discussion? All right, I'm seeing none. Let's go to a roll call on the motion and amendment.
On the motion to amend.
Oh, we actually need the number underneath.
Yeah, to reduce by thirteen thousand.
Okay.
So we've got a, we opened it with the motion to reduce it by thirteen thousand, and Michelle, give us a new number for A. This is a good time at the end of this week to note our staff who are doing Excel on live TV and in live moment with a bunch of people saying a bunch of things and doing it well. So thanks to them.
Yes, thank you.
We have a new category total in the personnel of two million eight hundred sixty three thousand five eighty seven for a department total of three zero zero one six three seven.
Any further discussion on this? All right, let's go to a roll call vote.
Just to clarify, is this on the amendment, the whole general? Okay.
Yeah.
You know, because they did another amendment.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Are we voting on the amendment or the bottom line of the budget?
Bottom line.
Pass.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero to one abstain.
I didn't abstain. I passed two different things. Abstain means that I have a conflict, which I don't have. If you say pass, it just means you're not required to vote right now. We're required to vote when it comes time for the budget.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
All right, thank you so much for your time, your attention to detail. I know it's a long process. I also want to thank my liaisons, Ms. Wiltz and Mr. Iverson for going through this more than once. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Don't be surprised.
We might see you again, though.
All right, have a good weekend. Counsel, by my record, that brings us to the end of this evening's items. I just wanted to really quickly see, did any counselor have anything else? Counselor McKim?
I, I do have two, well, one comment, and then I was wondering if we could bring up the four B, because I want to talk levy just for a minute. But it's just one comment, based on what we did yesterday. You know, I, I would like to at some point in this process to see if we may reconsider the recorder's budget. I, I regret not having made a motion to reduce the one deputy recorder by half with the idea that they'll pay for the remaining half. Out of perpetuation. So I don't know if anybody else supports asking the recorder back, but.
Who's, who's the liaison to the recorder?
Marty.
Marty. I, I, I will support that.
Okay, will you talk to her? Will you, will you tell her?
Want me to call her? I'm not, yeah. Look, I'm the girl. I could call you. Are you afraid to call?
I will, I will let you know that she is out of town tomorrow. So she's not in the office. So don't call her tomorrow.
We've got next week. We burn, I'll hurry.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so that, thank you. And then can we look at the four B briefly?
And while they're doing it, do we have an answer on the health miscellaneous?
Oh, yeah, good, good question.
See there? I know there's a reason you kept me around.
Okay, so I followed up twice today and still have not received a response from the attorney representing the Indiana Department of Health. So my hope is that perhaps I can just set up a call with our legal counsel, Jeff and Molly, and then this attorney and maybe get a response that way. But I am working on it. Unfortunately, I just haven't received a response like I'd hoped.
Thank you.
Because. Because how much would we have to move over if we can't count that miscellaneous would be about half a million? I mean, I don't know where we are.
I don't have any idea.
Are you ready?
What?
She's, she's going to pull up the four B, please.
Comes on and then it disappears.
If I may just add, there are, I have a county auditor email group, and this is a common theme right now. It's a hot topic. So it sounds like a lot of counties are overfunded in their health fund eleven fifty nine.
Are overfunded?
Overfunded.
Mm hmm.
So there's been a lot of conversation going on between the auditors. So I imagine something is going to have to change eventually regardless.
Whatever. We don't want to lose that state funding, even if we have to put money over there and.
It's hard, hard to contemplate an overfunding problem.
Yeah. So, so I guess what I wanted to get at, though, is that if we look at our at our levies, in particular in the election fund, the election fund is, is particularly high, just based on the four, I mean, that's not, nothing that, you know, nothing related to the budget for that fund, it just four percent over what, what it was last time, bringing us to a really high operating balance, even high given any conceivable purchase of new equipment for election, you know, for, for vote centers. And so, and I know when we finally, when we actually do vote on rates and levies, we'll, we'll be taking a formal vote on this. But I just wonder if, if even just for our analytical purposes, since we're looking at these deficit numbers, we really ought to distribute some of that election levy to, to other funds, including to the general fund. So I, 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 do we just want to leave the auditor to make some recommendations, which you don't have to do now? But just, I, I suggest that even though we're not taking a formal vote on this, we agree to let the auditor make some, some adjustments.
How much are you seeing in there that you, I, I can't see that. How much do you think that we could reduce that levy and put it, maybe move it?
A large, a large part of it. I mean, at le, at least half of it.
I was going to say.
Yeah.
Because remember, if they get the levy for it, they also get the miscellaneous.
Right, so that was, that'll have to be.
That's.
Reduced. But still, we're talking an operating balance of four hundred fifty one percent right now, and that's after fully funding the budget.
I think Counselor Iverson's got a comment.
I, I do not disagree with the analysis, nor do I disagree with the recommendate, the thought that we can get a recommendation. My question, though, is I haven't seen an estimate for vote center costs yet. I, I could have missed it. I, I just don't know how much that would, that, what impact that would have on this fund. So.
Do not purchase it's their.
I do, I do understand that, yeah.
I, 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 I agree with, that we have not seen that. I would also offer, I think that if we haven't seen it, it doesn't exist for these purposes yet.
Right.
And that could be for a variety of good or bad reasons, depending on the person here. But I, you know, I, I kind of take that.
What? Well, I, yeah, I, I agree. I, I hear you.
Well, and, and so I'm not, you know, not even, we're not suggesting transferring money out of there, which we can't anyway. But we're just talking about, about reducing the levy below what four percent over last year's was, just to not keep dumping money in when at this point.
So how much are we thinking that we could then, it would?
Well, I think we were saying half, but, but let's let the, you know, I, I'd be interested in the auditor recommendation. You know, not on the spot here, but.
Yeah.
I think our counsel's got a comment as well.
I would also add, assuming that vote centers are recommended, some of the cost will be offset by grant funding that the clerk has applied for, for equipment, because equipment that would be usable in vote centers is also usable in early voting. So I know that they were just, they have advised us, they received a HAVA grant, and they're using that to purchase equipment that would be compatible for vote centers. So I do think some of those costs will be offset by.
Great point.
Already purchased equipment.
That's, that's, that's a great point. And in our scores, President Deckard, your, your comment.
Again, the clerk should have touted that HAVA, HAVA grant that we got, yeah.
Well, the one thing I'll, one thing I'll add to that is if I recall when they were, they, they'd come to me a year ago, I think, asking just generally about the process for equipment and blah, 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 combining my counsel and state history. And if I remember correctly, some of the equipment would be new equipment that would work in addition to what they have now. Is that the gist?
Yes, so they have the poll pads and the printers that they use at early voting that can potentially print any ballot. And those would be the same equipment that would be necessarily for vote centers. And so that's what they're using the HAVA grant for this year. And I mean, the HAVA grant has been around every year, so I imagine that it would also be an option in the future as well.
Maybe you all think about when you go to the polls and they print that out for you, depending if it's Perry three, four, or five, whatever, or early voting. It's very similar for a vote center concept. Other, other comments on this, though? Yes, Counselor Munson?
So it's really, really more a question than a comment. Or maybe just a statement. I'm interested in knowing more about what the percent of budget operating balance means to us. I note that reassessment and aviation have the lowest percents. And I'm, I'm going to ask the, the auditor to educate us more about these these particular figures here, because we don't know necessarily how important that percentage actually is. And I, I just think it's helpful to understand more about this, this four B chat when we're thinking about moving levy.
Sure. So the operating balance as a percent of the budget is just simply telling you, like, of the overall budget, this is what is going to be remaining, the, it's the percent of what will be remaining after, you know, we receive the anticipated revenue and expend what was budgeted. So it is an important figure to look at. Obviously, we do need to move some things around as we are overfunded in some locations, underfunded in others. And so that's where, you know, we adjust the rate, where the auditor usually adjusts the rate within Gateway for the, all the levy funds, except for the rate controlled, obviously.
All right. So I look forward to your recommendations.
I think I saw Counselor Wiltz.
Um, and I know there was some discussion, maybe for our next council meeting next week about looking at solid numbers as opposed to percentages in terms of what we target in these funds. Is that correct?
Yes, this is also noted. It's under the operating balance as a percent of budget, the target operating balances.
Yeah. So ultimately, whereas before we were thinking in terms of trying to hit a percent, we'll be thinking in terms of a dollar figure.
Yes.
And obviously, that will be a percent, but not what we're using. Got it?
Right now, you have both. Right now you have both to kind of help us through the transition, I guess.
And just, this is maybe sort of a budgetary philosophy, uh, comment, but, you know, we've talked about having in terms of those, those operating balances, the idea that we have one savings account, not all, not five different or six different savings accounts. And that's why, you know, we've allowed aviation, for example, and reassessment, uh, and health to get much leaner with the idea that we really shouldn't be keeping a surplus of cash in those funds and we should just have enough to be able to make sure we can make, make payroll and not have to worry about that, but nothing more. The election fund is a little bit in the middle. That doesn't fit neatly into those categories because it's, it is an operating fund, but we treat it a little bit like a CUMM fund as well. Just because, first of all, we may possibly have capital expenses, but also because we have, uh, expenditures that vary kind of widely from year to year. So that one's a little, still a little harder to get, uh, to keep a grip on, just because it's sort of halfway between a CUMM fund and a regular operating fund.
And we're not required to have an election fund. We opted to do that so that we could sort of have that grow. We were supposed to be using about the same average amount for all four years so that we didn't get hit hard when it was the presidential election. And so I would not like to see the, uh, election fund, uh, be reduced down to where we've got something really big to hit us in four years. So that's actually taken it, but whatever doesn't get covered. I think the legislation says to us, whatever that doesn't get covered in that election fund, general has to pay it anyway.
Yep. Any other comments or questions?
I have questions. Yes. Uh, before, when we were talking about, they adjusted the four B when we added the million five for the community crossings, which then instead being 200 and some to the good, we were a million something in whole. But I didn't see the adjustment made for the, uh, CUMM bridge, which was 159,000 something. I rounded it off of 160,000. And since that's a toll, that, that CUMM bridge is with, sets within, uh, frozen inside county general. Did, did we need to adjust that portion of it?
I thought you did.
Where is that? Is, where is that in line with this four B?
I think she, I think she adjusted it.
Oh, I didn't think she did.
Yeah, it's right there. We fixed it.
I can't see.
Other comments or questions? Well, seeing none, as we get to the end, I want to note that this is the end of our third night. In a moment, we'll be in recess, but I want to note that that is the halfway mark for these hearings. And, um, the first two nights of this, uh, were some longer nights, but, uh, tonight, I think, uh, a little bit shorter and fruitful with some of the work that we're doing and we're just gonna have to keep at it and we'll get it. So with that, if there's nothing else for the good of the council or the county, we will be in recess until Wednesday, September 11th, 2024 at 5:00 PM here in the Nat U Hill Room.
And I just wanted to remind you guys, um, you should have got a, an email from Courtney today with regards to the central, the combined dispatch budget. So, um, we, so you did get that and so they're on the schedule for Thursday? For a discussion. So, as you were asking about that. So they did send me a copy of it. So you guys should have a copy of the dispatch budget, combined dispatch budget now for your review. So.
Thank you. All right, we are in recess. Thanks.